Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 19th, 2018. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation by, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight as we meet, I am struck by the fact that in talking the last several days with members of our medical community, I am hearing reports that we seemingly have record numbers of Batavians either sick with the flu or some disease related to the wintertime, and that hospitals are overflowing, emergency rooms are taking huge times to be able to deal with the crowds they have. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon our area and our world, that we will, things will occur that will allow for the, all this flu epidemic and all the sickness that's seached upon us at the moment will go away. We also tonight ask that a special blessing be showered upon all those who are representing our country and the foreign soils of the defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them as they go about their vital mission. As always, we ask for reflection and devotion and understanding and vision as we act on the items of business before us, knowing that each and every one of us tonight is here to do what in our best hearts and minds is in the best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Amen.
Alman Stark, would you lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
The record deflected, all 14 elected members of the city council are present in account for this evening's meeting. Moving to item number four, items to be removed, editor changed on tonight's agenda. Alman Atack, do you have anything to say?
I do not have anything this evening.
Anybody else? Okay, moving to item number five, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alman Atack is chairman of governmental services. Will you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file historic preservation commission minutes for January 22nd, 2018; Plan commission minutes for November 1 and December 6, 2017; Committee of the Home minutes for January 23rd, 2018; November and December 2017 financial reports. Approvals: February 9th, 2018 payroll in the amount of $816,342.31; Accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,335,423.14; City council minutes for February 5th, 2018; Resolution 18-21-R tax abatement; Resolution 18-22-R tax abatement; Resolution 18-23-R tax abatement; Resolution 18-24-R tax abatement; Resolution 18-25-R renewing contract for aid victim services; Resolution 18-26-R renewing contract for Dundle and Jansen's local prosecution. I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Move, Alman Atack, second, Alman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number six, is a presentation by Scott Corbin for Tri-City ambassadors. I don't see him here. Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is presentation by Duquesne Abate, Patty Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing us to share a little time with you. We'd like to show our appreciation for the many years that Batavia has hosted our annual Toy and Food Run, motorcycles bringing toys and food to charities in the Fox Valley area. This year, we helped over 18 different charities with the help of the city of Batavia, allowing us to come through your beautiful town and showing the support that you always have. This is our 31st year, last year was, 31 years of doing this. This will be the 31st year, 2018. 32nd year, I'm sorry, 32nd year, this year, 2018. For those of you interested in wanting to find out what Abate is, specifically our Duquesne chapter, I have some flyers here for anybody that's interested. I leave them up here for you or wherever you'd like. I'll put them out on your table over here on the side. They explain basically what A-Bate is, which is an acronym for A Brotherhood Aimed Toward Education, or motorcycle lobbying group, fight for the rights of motorcyclists, and that entails many different things, which many of you are aware of, many of you may not be. That's pretty much everything I have. We have some plaques today for the city of Batavia, also for the Batavia Police Department, and for the Batavia ESDA. So, these were people that helped quite a lot and always have with our Toy and Food Run, making it a success that it is in the motorcycling world. We are second in toys, only to Chicago's Toys for Tots, but we are the largest in the state for toys and food being donated, and that is in large part due to the city of Batavia. And we thank you all very much for your cooperation and help during those times.
Maybe I could ask Chief Deike and Chief Mazza if you'd come up with me and...
Do we know yet, but the date of the...
Yes, yes.
It's Thursday.
Second Sunday, but the date will be October 14th.
There's always the dates that I can remember. I always get a chance to bend a deer for a minute or two.
Why do we have them up here?
We have, yeah. Always entertaining to see. He always brings some new chapter, verses something with him. Two years ago, he had gone to Reams in Elburn and bought a place out of bratwurst.
Oh, yes.
And we were trying, he wanted to find someplace to keep the bratwurst warm because, or cold versus warm, so that he could go back to Chicago, and he had some party who was going to host, that he was going to use them all. We had fun to do to get those bratwursts killed. So, you never know what's going to be called upon you and everything. But, on behalf of the city, I thank you for all the great efforts you do, and certainly I would note that you include the Batavia Christmas Toy Drive as one of the receivers of your distribution.
You do.
Yes, we very strongly appreciate that, and you helped us. Last year, we served well over 500 kids in the community, so what you gave us went a long way, so thank you very much for that.
We appreciate it.
Chief Deike is head of ESDA, so...
Thank you very much.
Chief Mazza from the Police Department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All works is all work better together. Thank you.
Good. All right. It's good to be down. Thank you. He's over here on the side, everybody's interested.
Okay. Moving then to matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Anybody else? Okay, moving then to item nine, Main Street.
Taking over Main Street minute tonight for Jamie.
Okay.
And she was going to let me take over most of it anyway, but she apologizes that she couldn't be here. I'm Abby Beck. I'm here representing the Well Batavia Initiative to tell you a little bit about our Walk Batavia, Bike Batavia campaign. Our goal for this campaign is pretty simple. We want to increase the number of people biking and walking to and around downtown Batavia, and our 2018 focus is to get more Batavians to acknowledge that and understand that suburban reliance on cars is unsustainable and unhealthy, both for individuals and for the community as a whole. So, we want the downtown vitality to increase, and we need more people down there to do that. And we want people to just slow down and analyze their environment and understand it a little bit better from a pedestrian or a cyclist's point of view. Here's what's in our education toolkit so far. A couple summers ago, we installed the Walk Your City signage. Last year, we produced a mini documentary about walking and biking downtown Batavia, which I'll get into in a few minutes. We have built a website that will be releasing March 1st with the full documentary that's going to contain a lot of information and stories about getting around downtown, and all of that information will also be pushed to our social media feeds. And then we're going to be sharing our stories with other national organizations like AARP, Strong Towns, and America Walks, groups that are, that we take a lot of inspiration from and that are having a larger conversation about how to make towns stronger through walkability and cycling infrastructure. So, we just want to be part of that larger conversation. Here's a sneak peek of our website. Again, it won't go live until March 1st, but what we're including on there is a map of downtown Batavia, where somebody can take a virtual walk through the town. Each of those little icons represents an achievement in walking or biking infrastructure, an area of concern, or just something interesting about our downtown, themed as social, economic, or environmental notes. We'll have a series of case studies published, stories about walking and biking in Batavia, and then a set of the research, the facts and figures that inform our campaign, if anybody wants to check our sources and see where we're getting our information. That'll all be on there, too. So, finally, the mini documentary. We received a grant last year, last August, to produce a short-term project that would somehow improve the livability of our town. It was granted by the AARP Livable Communities Program. We got the money in August and had to submit all of our final program information by December 1st. So, it was a quick project, and we're pretty proud of what we came up with, with the time and money allowed. We teamed up with Jamie from Main Street and Amy Moore from the Bike Commission to put it all together. The goal of the video was to create a visual advocacy tool that would showcase what's really awesome about downtown Batavia in terms of walking and biking infrastructure, because we do have a lot going for us, and then also showcase what could be improved, where there are challenges for people of different mobility levels. Like I said, we've got this plan to roll out March 1st. Jamie Sam may have sent you all a link already, and if not, she's planning on it. The, it's a 15-minute piece, so I'm not going to show you the full 15-minute piece tonight. I do have two little teasers that'll show you. We hope you like it. We hope you want to share it. If you do want to share it, just wait till March 1st, because that's when we're actually going to roll it out. But after that, please share it with everybody that you know. So, I'll just show you those 30-second trailers if I could.
Having a central downtown that's really focused on everyday community life will be healthy for Batavia moving forward. I would close down the Wilson Bridge if it was up to me.
Making this all entire downtown just a walking area. Put some parking lots on the outskirts and let people walk. We need to walk more. Heart healthy.
So, that's one of them. And here's our other trailer. Nope, that's the same one. So, just kidding, you only get to see one, because I only put the one on there twice, apparently.
No, you clicked that one twice, so it's the upper left.
The other one.
This one?
Yep.
Well, it says second trailer, so I actually know that this is...
We thrive on walking business. It's the easiest way to see what's around in your town. If you're driving, you might miss it.
The idea is to, you know, make Batavia the bicycle riverbank showplace in the Fox Valley.
Walkability and accessibility are what allows us to interact with our community on a very basic human level, on a very personal scale, how we can help people feel connected, really connected to their community, and play a role in their happiness.
We thrive.
All right, so that's just a teaser. We hope you like it. We, we believe it showcases some of the best parts of Batavia, and, and we want to share that with the world, and also just keep the conversation about walkability and cycling-friendly infrastructure going as much as possible, so that we continue to make this a great place for people that live here, a great place for people that visit here. So, thank you for all that you do, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just want to offer a piece of information for you. Last week, I was visited here by a company out of Chicago called Lime Bike.
What is it?
Lime, L-I-M-E-B-I-K-E, and they are the ones that are now running the bike rental program in downtown Chicago.
Oh, really?
And they have a bike that you just leave it on the street corner, and somebody else comes along, and you have to have an app on your phone to activate it. And heaven help you if you steal this bike, because they've got this bike all wired up with technologies, and it's sending out a signal at all times, anybody's riding on it, telling it, telling the world who wants, who has access to this satellite, I guess, that's tracking it, knowing where these bikes are at. So, they have, they have very little theft of these in downtown Chicago. But they came out to see me because they want to open up, start opening up a suburban service, and they've chosen, so they tell me, Batavia to be kind of one of the central points of it because of our strong history already, but what they want to do is connect Naperville with Geneva, and using Batavia and St. Charles, Naperville, Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles, and running on the bike trails between Naperville and Geneva, and then adding St. Charles and Batavia to it. And the idea is, is that if you live in the city and you want to come out for a bike ride, you just take the train to Naperville, and you get on the bike over there, and you ride it through the tri-cities, and then you leave it in Geneva, and vice versa. So, I told them that you folks existed, and so that I suggested that they, they want to come some night and maybe put on a presentation to the city council in the near future, and that when they did, I was, I suggested that maybe we'd have the Bike Commission and whomever else you wanted to bring come in, maybe like 45 minutes before the meeting, and have you meet in a room someplace here in the building, and you can kind of, because I'd be anxious to get the Bike Commission's response and reaction to this idea. It sounds fairly interesting to me, and they don't seem to be wanting to cause any problem, and they certainly would open up the number of available bike opportunities for a whole bunch of people who could then bike in Batavia and not have to own a bike. So, that's kind of what they're all about. And they claim that they've, they've done about three or four other towns already, Portland, Oregon, as I remember, is one, and maybe one in Colorado, and they're, so I think you can go on the computer and look at them, but it's Lime Bike, and they're all, they're all painted, the bikes are all painted a lime color, which they say is one of the ways that they stand out, and everybody kind of knows who they are then.
Very cool. Exciting to hear. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I agree. Yes.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
That's what used to be Ivy.
Moving then to item 10, Resolution 18-27-R, change order number four with Williams Brothers Construction. Alman O'Brien, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to ask Alman Chansett to present.
At Tuesday's council meeting, we heard some updates on the wastewater treatment plant. This change order covers some additional underground piping that is required. It's going to result in a total increase of $54,578, and then it will impact on the contract completion time. So, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion, or I will make a motion to pass Resolution 18-27-R, authorizing change order number four with Williams Brothers Construction.
Second. Move, Alman Chansett, second, Alman O'Brien, for the approval of Resolution 18-27-R. Any further discussion? Your Honor.
I'd just like to say, you know, the updates that we get on a regular basis at council meetings have been really good. I went back and looked at a couple of these and thought about this at the time that I've been on the council, and this is, I think, approaching like 1% of the cost of this project. So, the oversight that we have in the construction management group that's running this is doing a phenomenal job for the massive amount of work they're doing down there, and all the things they seem to find on a monthly basis that maybe everybody that works for the city doesn't remember that was underground over there, or where they were underground over there, all the issues that they found, and coming up with good ways to get around them and work through them, and be able to do what we have to do to try to get this wastewater treatment plant done. And the other reason I want to bring this up tonight was, is we see a lot of stuff pop up on social media about people talking about the smell downtown, and this is truly the reason for it, is the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project has got everything open down there, and that's the reason behind it. It's probably another six months before we're beyond that, but the public really needs to be reminded again that, you know, we're doing a really good thing for the community in moving forward with this plant, and having it ready to be able to handle what we think are going to be all of the upgrades that we need to do to meet all the standards that are going to be forced on us. So, I just want everybody to know that, and to get that out there to the public again, that this will end, it's going to be about six months by the time it's all back together. Thank you.
And also, Your Honor, I'd like to say just kudos to staff and to Trotter and Associates. I think they did a fine job picking their contractor, and as Alman Wolf said, the oversight is, I've been down there a few times now during workday, just walking around with Trotter, and the oversight has been really right on, so we're in, we're in pretty good hands, I'd have to say.
Anybody else? Kirk call the roll down on Resolution 18-27-R.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent.
Item 11, the administrators' report.
Hi, just have a few pieces of news to share with you. First, wanted to make everybody aware, just a reminder that the Committee of the Home meeting for tomorrow night is canceled. Also, we had a meeting today with Austin Dempsey to discuss the site for the Flag Memorial. As we took a look at the area where that memorial was planned to be placed, it would eliminate the circle turn, which is actually important for large vehicles to be able to make a turn and come out of the back toward the north side of the Island Avenue. And so, we took another look at, we had previously looked at the South Plaza here as a potential area for the memorial, and whereas the last time we looked at it, we thought that it, there was no way to avoid setting it on top of existing utilities, which we just simply cannot do. But I think in the intervening period of time, the memorial itself has gotten a little bit smaller in design, and looking at it today, Mayor was also part of the meeting, it appears that we might be able to place it at the, in the South Plaza, which solves not only the issue of being able to retain a turnaround for large trucks and the fire truck as well, but it also puts the memorial in a more prominent position, right at the end of Houston Street, where people on the bike path won't be able to avoid seeing the memorial itself. And so, that is, Austin is going to be meeting with the Park District, since that is Park District property, to see if they approve of its placement there. We met with Prairie Commons, the developers for Prairie Commons, last week. We went over all of the comments that staff have provided to them, and they expect to be filing their final application by March 1st. On the Tomlee Building, we haven't received any proposals on our published request for proposals yet, but the, they're not due until March 1st is the deadline. This week, on March 21st, we'll be hosting an informational meeting where parties who are interested in putting forth a proposal have the opportunity to have their questions answered. Staff is reviewing the final plat and final engineering for the development that's at the southwest corner of Wilson and Spewler. And last week, the Historic Preservation Commission approved the certificate of appropriateness for the facade changes for the One Washington Place project. The building permit for the Dollar Tree Store on Fabian Parkway was also issued. Last Thursday, members of, from Nycor met with city staff and described to us a automated metering technology that they're going to be installing for Nycor customers in Batavia, actually throughout their system. But they're doing a pilot project in North Aurora and Batavia of about 800 homes, and so they're sending out information to these residents and also putting a doorknob hanger on there to inform them of what the process is going to be. There's no need to access the inside of anyone's home, all of the work is done on the outside of the home, so it should probably be, you know, minimally invasive, but if residents have questions, they'll also provide them with an 800 number that they can call to answer any questions. This will allow them to not have to have somebody walking from door to door to collect the information from the meters, but rather, they will be able to be read from a centralized location. This is similar to, the city of Batavia has installed the meters for water and for electric that allow us to capture the information just driving by the homes, instead of having to get out and go into yards and whatnot to check. So, probably a good improvement there. And that's all that I have, unless, do people have any questions for me?
Any questions?
One question on the Nycor thing. If they're going to do that from a central location, are they doing it, is it hooked into something else then, to be able to send that signal out? Or are they doing it all radio?
I believe it's all radio.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Alman O'Brien.
You have down here regarding the Campana project?
Yes.
Frank Mazz said, basically, he thought that, you know, the Campana was zoned for residential.
It's mixed use.
Mixed use, and so residential doesn't have to go in there, right?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Industrial and retail.
Exactly.
I just wanted to make sure we're all clear on that, so when he's selling it, he's not just selling residential.
No, absolutely not. In fact, one of his purposes coming in was to find out if residential was excluded.
I'd like to go back to the first thing that Laura talked about, and that's the idea of maybe moving the windmills or the Flag Memorial out here in the front, and the site for it would be kind of on the southwest corner of the, of the property here, so a lot of the stuff out in this area probably could almost stay where it is, but we would reroute the bike trail once you came across the bridge and bring it in line with the bike trail that comes across the street here, because right now, there's kind of a, a little bit of a jog set in place there. The other thing that I think we want to specifically talk about is the windmill circle has become somewhat problematic to us, and I have a senior citizen in town who tells me that she had to visit the emergency room at the hospital twice, because she was going around that circle, and suddenly, without any visibility at all, a three-year, three or four-year-old child ran right in front of her car, and she said she stopped about six inches from the child before running him over. And what had happened was, is that the children go over into the playground there, around the children statue in the playground area that's over there, and they play there, and every now and then, one of them wants to run over into the windmill circle. And so, it's pretty easy for them to run over there, if there's four or five kids their parents are keeping track of, and apparently, this near miss we had was that type of a situation. But, as the lady explained it to me, if, that we've set the windmill circle up so that it has natural prairie grass underneath it, and that prairie grass is three or four feet high, and the small child running between that prairie grass is very hard to see, even if they're on the sidewalk. So, as this child ran across the street, suddenly, the woman said, he, he came out of no place. I mean, suddenly, he was right there, because she couldn't see him, because the grass was high. So, you know, we've talked about potentially changing the windmill circle there a little bit, and maybe doing a windmill walk and moving the windmills we have and put them on the River Walk in more spacious areas. I don't know if we'll continue with that or not, but if nothing else, I'm afraid we're going to have to tell the windmill folks that we got to get rid of the prairie grass underneath the windmills there, because it is just too much of a hazard for, for people. I'm also aware of another situation involving a lady in a wheelchair, and I think it was largely the same thing. She was down low toward the ground, the prairie grass was up, and people couldn't see her, and she started going down and got into the street, and some people slammed on the brakes and didn't hit her.
If they're going to do that from a central location, are they doing it, is it hooked into something else then to be able to send that signal out? Or are they doing it all radio?
I believe it's all radio.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Alderman O'Brien.
You have down here regarding the Campana Project.
Yes.
Frank Mazz said basically he thought that, you know, the Campana was zoned for residential.
It's mixed use.
Mixed use and so residential doesn't have to go in there, right?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Industrial and retail.
Exactly.
I just wanted to make sure we're all clear on that, so when he's selling it, he's not just selling residential.
No, absolutely not. In fact, one of those purposes coming in was to find out if residential was excluded.
I'd like to go back to the first thing that Laura talked about and that's the idea of maybe moving the windmills or the Flag Memorial out here in the front. And the site for it would be kind of on the southwest corner of the, of the property here, so a lot of the stuff out in this area probably could almost stay where it is, but we would reroute the bike trail once you came across the bridge and bring it in line with the bike trail that comes across the street here, because right now there's kind of a, a little bit of a jog set in place there. The other thing that I think we want to specifically talk about is the windmill circle has become somewhat problematic to us and I have a senior citizen in town who tells me that she had to visit the emergency room at the hospital twice because she was going around that circle and suddenly without any visibility at all, a three-year, three or four-year-old child ran right in front of her car and she said she stopped about six inches from the child before running him over. And what had happened was is that the children go over into the playground there around the children statue and the playground area that's over there and they play there and every now and then one of them wants to run over into the windmill circle. And so it's pretty easy for them to run over there if there's four or five kids their parents are keeping track of and apparently this near miss we had was that type of a situation, but as the lady explained it to me, if the, that we've set the windmill circle up so that it has natural prairie grass underneath it and that prairie grass is three or four feet high and the small child running between that prairie grass is very hard to see, even if they're on the sidewalk. So as this child ran across the street, suddenly the woman said, he, he came out of no place. I mean, suddenly he was right there because she couldn't see him because the grass was high. So, you know, we've talked about potentially changing the windmill circle there a little bit and maybe doing a windmill walk and moving the windmills we have and put them on the river walk in more spacious areas. I don't know if we'll continue with that or not, but if nothing else, I'm afraid we're going to have to tell the windmill folks that we got to get rid of the prairie grass underneath the windmills there because it is just too much of a hazard for, for people. I'm also aware of another situation involving a lady in a wheelchair and I think it was largely the same thing. She was down low toward the ground, the prairie grass was up and people couldn't see her and she started going down and got into the street and some people slammed on the brakes and didn't hit her. So we've had a couple of near misses out there and it's something that I really think we'd all be highly embarrassed if something like that were to happen. So we got to take a look at what's going on with that windmill circle there because there have been several instances now that we're aware of, of people that have had a near miss of getting hit by not being visible coming out of the grass area, so. I think that's what we want to cover tonight, so. I was very encouraged with the meeting with the Flag Day folks. They were most seemingly very amenable to the idea of potentially moving it over here and the next step, I guess, is we're going to go to a park board meeting and have a conversation with them about it, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, community development, Alderman Brown.
Couple of meetings to announce, Your Honor. As Laura Newman just mentioned, the COWF for tomorrow evening has been canceled, but the plan commission is scheduled for February twenty-first, that's a Wednesday, at seven P.M. First couple items on their agenda will be the continuation of a public hearing for the amendment of the official zoning map from light industrial to the neighborhood commercial, and that is for the area of one oh-six and one twenty-six South Mallory Avenue. And then also on their agenda is the beginning of the public hearings for the amendment to the comprehensive plan use map for general commercial to light industrial and the amendment to the official zoning map from general commercial with Arterial Street setback overlay district to L-one light industrial with Arterial Street setback overlay district, portions of the southeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Nagel Boulevard. And I don't think they have anything else on their agenda, but they are scheduled to meet Wednesday at seven P.M. And then Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet Monday, February twenty-sixth at five thirty. And then the next COW meeting is scheduled for February twenty-seventh at seven thirty. And the only thing on that agenda right now is the presentation on the branding project by Spire Incorporated. So I have.
Any questions? Okay, Government Services, Alderman Atack.
Yes, next, the COW meeting, February twenty-seventh. We're also adding discussion of the strategic plan, a review of the vision, mission, and values, a SWOT analysis, and discussion of the major categories. And that's all I have.
Okay, City Services, Alderman Wolfe.
Uh, no report tonight.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, no report, Your Honor.
Okay, moving to thirteen other businesses, Alderman Callahan.
A couple things. Number one, Steve Hieronymus, who we know is a huge champion of accessibility rights, sent a request, he was talking to me about how he couldn't go to Limestone easily this past weekend and had, people with accessibility issues have a large portion of what they want to do is have parking that is convenient. And I was kind of struck by what they were saying about the walkability issues and kind of what Steve Werrenfeld said, put the parking on the outskirts. That works well, except if you can't walk and you do have accessibility issues, but that doesn't mean that we can't give up maybe a space or two for those that do have accessibility issues and if you can walk, you should walk. One of those spots that Steve had mentioned that would be relatively convenient would be the southeast corner of Wilson and Shumway, right in front of the garage there, there is a third spot and then it has the loading zone, which doesn't block those two garage doors. He felt that that would be an opportune spot for, and a disabled, a handicap location for anyone that does have accessibility issues to be able to get into the downtown like we all would. There are, there are some spots that are nearby, but they're on private property or they have their own issues to it. So I was wondering if the city could explore the opportunity of making a centralized downtown handicap space.
I certainly think it's a good idea. I mean, anybody on the council have any other ideas about it? I guess one place I would also wonder would be that area right to the south of the old Public Works Building on South Shumway there, that's all level, and I think that would be almost a straight shot onto the sidewalk there going up I, or Shumway Avenue to where Limestone is around the corner.
And I think that's the goal, is convenient, accessible to other businesses so that we show that they're a valued member of the community and also takes into consideration spots that are wide enough, large enough for, for equipment without having to recreate the, create the system.
I sat in on some conversations with our staff about when we were doing the Larson and Becker property and I think that was pretty much designed and made so there's, I don't think there's any stair barriers there if you take the route. So I think we've tried to start to do this on, on North River Street because we were told that was the one that had with the Saturday morning farmers markets and the other festivals and stuff, that that was one everybody seemingly wanted to have of, of all the spots downtown, that seeming it was a priority. But I think you bring up an excellent point, you know, we can certainly put that on an ongoing conversation at the COW meetings to see if, if the rest of the council can find some locations where they think it could work too, so.
And that's why I thought it was great that he's bringing these things out because he has the eye for it that we're not looking for all the time. And I know that we've been trying to make sure, but sometimes since he's unfortunately the expert in it, I listen to him on a lot of that stuff.
I do too. You know, the one that's kind of a barrier is at the intersection of Main and Batavia Avenue there, across the street from the funeral home, where you got those steps going down. And any place you got to step in, near the state highway is seemingly very high-profiley problematic for folks in wheelchairs and walkers and whatever.
Right. So that was one. Next was the, I've kind of forwarded it to Laura and staff, was this Pulse Point app. It is where, it's a program that is out there which identifies circumstances and situations where either AED equipment could be informed to the public and situations where CPR, life-saving measures would be if you are close enough before law, before our first responders get there. And I know in this current day and age, people feel powerless about a lot of things that are going on and what I've been reading and researching on, on it, it might be a way that we can seize some control and get some citizen engagement into, into the fabric of our community. And I would just ask that if another Alderman would join me, that we have Chief Daiki present that to Tri-County because there would be other shareholders that we would have to be, have to have some buy-in, but it could have a larger impact than just for Batavia alone.
I'll support you.
Okay.
And then the third one, he's not here, but just relatively quickly, the, Chris Lowe from the school board is, he wanted to be here and he was trying to get here as quick as he could, but he's going to let us know that the school board is, they're done talking about these issues revolving school safety. Done talking about it. I'm done talking about it. I'm done talking about, or I'm done being afraid to what we can and can't talk. So Chris approached me, he has buy-in from the school board about possibly having a town hall, community conversation about what programs we have available for our residents so they can remain engaged and identify those situations and get help before we have something happen. And I know everyone in this room does not want that to happen here and I know everybody in this room is done throwing up their hands and saying, I don't know what to do, I don't know what we can do, I don't know what we can't do. None of that will pass if we don't just start talking about what we have available to us. So Chris is working on that and if anybody would like to be involved in that, please let me know after.
The police department talked to me today and Chief, the high school's going to do a couple of things. Do you have those dates, the walkout and all that other stuff we were talking?
I know one of the dates was April twentieth. I think there's a couple of nationwide protests or walkouts that are planned. One was coming up in March, I'm not sure what the date is.
March twelfth.
March twelfth and then the other was April twentieth.
And the first one is for seventeen minutes to honor the seventeen that died in Florida.
That's the way I understand it, correct?
And we're, seemingly the school district and the city are in total agreement of cooperating with them and doing that. The kids will walk out of school, but then I guess they're going to wa, after the seventeen minutes are up, they're going to walk back in, which I think really sends a very positive message. And I certainly would agree, you know, we've, Alderman Chancet has brought up several times the idea that we should pass some kind of a resolution. You know, we've given it to Drendel's office to look at as to what we can and cannot say. You know, I guess you can say anything you want to say, the problem we have is, is there's a lot of federal law that stands in the way of what we could enforce and what we can't do as far as things that we want to do and, or some of us may want to do. So it's not an easy, it's not a, nothing black and white about this. It's, there's a very complex issue with it and you have to be somewhat aware of where the pitfalls are and that's what I'd like to have the city attorney do is present something to us that tells us kind of where we can go with this thing and not necessarily, you know, start going out and coming up with stuff that's going to get shot down legally or whatever have you as far as what we can't. Obviously, there's very strong sentiments about it in America. I certainly feel that way. I, I shared with Alderman Chancet when he first brought it up back in, I think it was two thousand and two. I flew to Springfield with Mayor Daley and it was right after we had had Police Officer Graver shot in Batavia by a, a citizen in a, in a, trying to serve a paper on him. And so fortunately, Graver survived the shooting, but Chicago had a police officer who had been killed almost within a few days of that. So Daley and I were asked to go to Springfield and testify before, as the two mayors who had had, you know, police-related shootings in their town, to go to Springfield and testify about our experiences, which we both did. And, you know, what we were trying to at least achieve at that point was is every gun in the state of Illinois was going to have an owner's name behind it so that there would be an easy trace on every gun that was out there. And as Mayor Daley said when we left, it, sometimes you do futile things in government, futile things in government and that appeared to be one of them as we left because it was obvious that there was a lot of issues regarding that when you got into, got it into the halls in Springfield. And so, you know, it's, I've been there and done it, I know what, what can happen and not happen and I didn't have a good experience, I will tell you that, when I went down there and did it. And so maybe this will help to change things. That's a terrible thing to have to happen before we change people's minds, but, you know, this is something obviously that doesn't seem to want to go away and it's in a new location, at a new time. It seems like it's every month now, somebody's doing some crazy thing someplace.
And I think in my conversations with Chris about it, albeit very briefly, we're on the same sheet of paper, that this is not just an issue of school violence. It is a, it is an issue of mental health in our communities, it is an issue of opioid and drug use in our communities, it is an issue of suicide in our communities, and those have larger and probably more pressing chances in our community than a, than a large-scale school shooting. But all of those rely upon the recognizing situations of when our fellow neighbors and our friends and our family are in trouble and how to get them that help and where to get them that help. I think people right now are lost, they're concerned, they're scared, and they don't know what to do. And it is our moral imperative as leaders of this community to step up and do something about it and at least show them the way.
Alderman O'Brien, you had your hand up.
Well, I just, I just think, you know, to Alderman Chancet's, you know, futile attempt, I think we as a, as a body of politic here, we should go to our state representatives and our United States senators and tell them how we feel. And I think that's what Dan was looking for. I mean, and, and I know it's futile, but if you say it long enough and loud enough and you have other communities doing the same thing, I mean, I, I, I don't know what else to do, but you just can't say, well, we're done. I mean, I, I was just shocked at Newtown and then it seems like you said, Mayor, every, every month, there's another shooting and, and now kids are feeling that they can't go to school. I mean, you know, one father was saying, you know, I, I sent my daughter to school today and I'm supposed to keep her safe and she was killed. And, and the guy was just a basket case for, for the loss of his daughter and blamed himself because he sent her to school. So thoughts and prayers, as, as Alderman Chancet says, mean nothing anymore. It's, you know, maybe we just get a, a letter drafted to say, hey, enough is enough. I mean, we, we have to do something. You know, I, I don't know all the ins and outs of guns, you know, everyone here probably knows that I'm opposed to guns, but I'm not looking to take anybody's guns, you know, keep your guns, but we need to have smarter laws on, on, on the books. And, and when they, they bring this before people, be, be, before the elected communities, you know, our senators and, and our congressmen, you know, well, you know, the NRA says we shouldn't do this or the Second Amendment, everyone hides behind the Second Amendment. And, and there was, on, on the news today, there was an FBI official saying, you know, Second Amendment's a little hot data today. And, you know, I, I think we need to do something that, I, what, I don't know and I'm not looking to take people's guns, I don't want to do that, but we have to have smarter laws and when we bring them forward, they need to vote on them and, and vote affirmative on them. And so we need to let our upper officials know that we, that, that we're going to start voting them out of office and we are elected officials, we represent a lot of people in Batavia, we need to let them know this is what the people of Batavia are looking for also, who are voters. And so again, I stand right shoulder to shoulder with Alderman Chancet and say, let's get going on this and let's get something to these, to these representatives.
I support that also.
Alderman Meitzler.
I, I don't disagree with contacting county level, state level, federal level representatives. They should be hearing about this issue and many other issues from as many people that have been expressing concern about them as has been as of late. I, I generally think though that, and I was glad to hear it kind of echoed, this is a very complex issue. This is bigger than a Second Amendment question. We're, we're looking at not, not even a week ago, fourteen students, children, gunned down, right? And, and before that, we, we've had other campuses shot up. We, we had Rosenberg, Oregon, we had Sandy Hook, we had Virginia Polytechnic, those were a wide range of weapons. Some of them, you know, there may be laws against, some of them there aren't. Some of them, the weapons were purchased legally. But that's, that's just a part of it. We've, we've had mass shootings, not at schools as well. And, and again, in some of those cases, perhaps there were illegal weapons, other ones, they were legally obtained. But that's even a small number compared to, as Marty said, the number of suicides by guns. You, you look at, at just the numbers according to CDC or gunviolence.org, I mean, you're, you're talking about thousands, thousands that are, that are taking their own lives by way of guns. And it's, and it's a wide range, it's not just kids. You, you take a look at veterans with PTSD being a factor, there's a high percentage there. Sixty-nine percent of roughly twenty veterans a day over the age of forty-nine. Thoughts and prayers are important, especially to the survivors, showing support from community, from friends, from family, thoughts and prayers are important. And I don't downplay those, but we as the adults have to do something beyond that and not just wait for the next tragedy. It just appears that i, if all we do is continue to take partisan sides, we immediately go hard left or hard right, we argue, the argument just draws everyone to a standstill and then nothing happens and everyone moves on to their day-to-day lives and then it happens again and it just wash, rinse, repeat. And I'm done with that, I'm exhausted with that. I support Marty's call for, you know, let's- let's have a conversation. I- I don't want to hear about how car accidents, or- or a hammer, or something else. I'm not trying to take guns away either. I don't think doing something just with mental illness is enough. I don't think just making tougher gun laws is enough. I think you have to do possibly both and more. I think this really is a serious, complicated problem that if we're serious about protecting our children, we are all gonna have to make sacrifices. If we're serious about protecting those we know, those who are in our family that suffer from mental illness, we are all gonna have to make sacrifices. If we're serious about protecting police officers from getting gunned down, or even shot at, we are all gonna have to make sacrifices. Now, that could come from sacrifice of personal liberties, that could come from hard choices about budget. We may have to make those same discussions, and choices, and sacrifices. I'm willing to be a part of that conversation.
Alderman Chancet, you want to say anything?
Well, just, I'm happy to hear everyone would like to do something. I- I had called for this back in November, I got on the phone the next day, I asked for the group to do something, and I got in touch with the mayor's offices in Tucson, in Akron, in Charlottesville, and Philadelphia. And they all shared with me unanimously passed resolutions calling for money to be poured into mental health resources, and for the leaders above us to look at gun laws. I didn't make any specific recommendations, and all four of the communities said that not one person from the NRA opposed the resolutions that they passed. So it's a step in the right direction. I guess I would have to say, when I watched the news today, and I heard that children were being interviewed, what most of them were saying was, "The reason the kids are walking out of school is because we don't believe in our leaders anymore. We don't believe that- that our leaders are gonna take care of us, so we're gonna leave school to let you guys know that we think you guys screwed up." I don't want to be part of that group of people who screwed up.
Mayor, the National School Walkout is on the fourteenth, not the twelfth, I wanted to correct myself, that's at ten AM on the fourteenth.
Thank you. Dan, I appreciate your comments and what you've done so far, and I- to build upon that and to what Marty's brought, it's like what Chris is trying to do. Kids have every, absolutely every reason to do- to think that, because they're right. They're right. And we do have to be the adults in the room and lead, and we- it has to start in our backyard. Because we can sign a resolu- we can sign a resolution, we can write our senators and our congressmen, but by the time that washes uphill and then back down, it's gonna be a trickle. So I think what- what needs to be done, we need to start here, in our town, in our community, so our kids know that we give a rip about them.
Alderman H.?
Can we- I believe that other communities are taking action, they're coming up with action plans on what they can do within their communities. Could we direct staff to- and I think a town hall meeting is good, but it would be good to go into such a meeting with some background information about what is actually possible, and what are the things that we could do? So could staff do some research on this and come back to us and tell us what our options are as a community?
Yeah, I would tell you that our police department, I feel, is really trying to stay on top of this, and it has been.
And maybe we need a report on what we're doing as a city.
Right. And I know that they take this seriously to heart, and they are doing, you know, we're the- one of the few that started having police officers in our schools very early on, and we've maintained that program to this day. And, you know, now we- we park a Mark Squad car right in front of Batavia High School every day when the kids are in there. So, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we're doing, and every kid in that school knows who that police officer is, and probably the great blessing of that police officer in there is probably the amount of information that he picks up with kids just coming and talking to him, and- and sharing what's going on. So there's a lot of positive stuff going on here, but I certainly have no problems with letting the police department give us a presentation on what they would like to do. You know, I just want to share with you-
And just, and also maybe taking it step forward and doing a little research about what other communities are doing, and what is possible for us to do as a community, and what's not possible.
Right. I- I just want to share with you, just for a moment here, how closely home some of this stuff hits. And on the day of the god-awful murders in Newtown, Connecticut, in that elementary school, now that night, we were having a meeting in this room, and Alderman Brown was running the meeting, so I was just kind of sitting off to the side, and all of a sudden, on my cellphone, I felt a vibration, and I look at this, and it's from the gal in the police desk down the hall, and she simply wrote, "Would you mind stepping out in the hall for a moment?" So I get up, and I go out in that door, and I get out there, and here stands Channel Two and Channel Seven, film crews. And they say, "We're told we need to talk to you, we need your help, we're trying to locate the resident," I believe his name was Daniel Bruen, "and he lived at eight ninety North Forest Avenue over by Louise White School. And we have determined that he is the grandfather of one of the kids that was murdered in the school today. And he's gonna be the lead story on the ten o'clock news, but we can't find him. And so, can you help us find him?" So I said, "Well, I'm not really-" this is one of the worst things I've ever heard of, I don't know what-" so they said, "Well, we're beating the doors down here." So I said, "Okay, give me a minute." So I went upstairs to my office, and I get into City Utility Billing, and I ran the address on the- on my computer, and it says, came back, I'll never forget this, it says, "Bill paid in full, moved to Newtown, Connecticut, October thirtieth." And what had happened was, these folks were the grandparents of one of the kids that was murdered in the school, and they had moved from Batavia on October thirtieth to go to Newtown, Connecticut, to become kind of the caretakers for their- there were three kids in the school, and their parents every day commuted down to New York City. And they- they went out there, and they- this happened to these poor people six weeks after they got there, that they were the ones that were there for this god-awful murder. They were later written up in R S V P magazine about this terrible event that they had had in their life. Anyway, the- I came back and told that to Channel Two and Channel Seven, and their response to me was, "Well, gee, will you go on the air?" And I said, "No, I won't go on the air, I don't want any- I don't want to be anywhere near this thing." So then they say, "Well, you're a public official, and you've just shared this information with us, so we're gonna have to quote you on the ten o'clock news." So I guess they did, so I was told by other people. But the next day, I received a call from the Episcopal Church up in Geneva, which is the church right to the north of Little Traveler up there. And it was the church secretary, and she calls me and says, "I'm calling to tell you how thankful we were with the nice way you handled that bad situation last night." And I said, "I don't know if I handled it, but why are you-" she says, "Well, Mr. Bruen was our business manager here at the church for ten years, and he just retired, as you told the news media, and moved to Newtown, Connecticut." And so, it was, you know, I- that was way, way too close for me or anybody else to even be near that god-awful thing, because that was about as bad as it can get, and they're all bad, but that one with those little kids involved was just really heartbreaking. But, I mean, it just shows you how close that this stuff can get to our town like ours, and, you know, have an impact on you. That's a moment I- I- in my days as mayor of this town, I will always remember that that event in my face on that night, and I was just walking out the hall, I didn't know what I was even getting into. And it was- it was that event. So it gets right here in this building, and so you never know who's gonna be the next person, you know, impacted by some of this, so. Alderman Stark?
Um, I- I called Alderman Callahan today, and we had a discussion about this very topic, because it's very confusing to me, in that I'm not sure how, as an elected official, I'm supposed to act, or what I'm supposed to do. And it's also very sobering that the public gets up in arms, and it brings it to the forefront of their attention when there's a mass shooting. But the statistics are sobering when you look at, in Illinois, in two thousand and sixteen, just the state of Illinois, there were twenty-two-hundred-and-seventy-eight drug overdoses in just our state, and nobody is bringing that to the forefront of our attention every day in a news cycle, just in one year in our state. So there's a conversation that has to be bigger than if we put metal detectors in the school. There's gotta be a reason, something that we can do at a more granular level in our community to make it so that people aren't drug overdosing, so that there aren't- we don't have to worry about suicides. There- we can't make a- wave a magic wand and make it all go away, but this also isn't Mayberry. And if we talked to the police, we- I think we would all be shocked to know what goes on that we don't know about every day, because we're protected from it. So I'm very- it's heartbreaking to know that these things are going on around us, and I don't know how we can fix it. I don't know what it'll take, what we can do. We can all talk about it until we're blue in the face, but until we can come up with something that we can do, I- it's- it's very confusing to me. I- I really, I don't know what the answers are, so.
The whole point of why I support what Chris is wanting to do is the very fact that with not- I know what you're talking about, Lucy, but people don't want to hear us researching it anymore. They don't want to hear us talking about it.
We haven't done that as a council, though.
No, nobody has. It gets- that's to Dan's point, by why there is no trust, because it comes out, and people say, "Oh, we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna study it, we're gonna find solutions." They're not going to find solutions if we can't just openly talk about what's going on. And to Susan's point, all we have to do right now is to not have the answers, but to be able to look out to them and say, "We know there's a problem. We don't have all the answers, but we know that here are steps that we can take, here are steps that they are taking, so that we're not operating in the blind. We know what social services we have available, we know what success stories we have available, we know the small things that need to be done rather than the big things." And that is where we gain the credibility of seeing Chris walk into the room. And actually, that is all we need to do at this point, because it's not being done. Everything else, having discussions on this law, that law, this issue, that issue, have been for naught. Why? Because it hasn't changed. If it was going to have, it would have changed by now. It's not. So we need to flip the narrative on it and make it our own. We need to own it. This is our town, these are our kids, and this is what we need to do. I don't care what somebody else is doing in another community as to whether or not it succeeds. If it succeeds, great for them, but I want to know that it succeeds when we don't have my kid gunning someone down, or my kid gunning someone down, if I don't catch warning signs.
You need to be prepared to talk about mental health issues, okay? And there's probably everybody in this room, and everybody throughout the- throughout our community, that in their families, they have a member who has a mental health issue. Okay, it affects all families, but nobody talks about it. They sweep it under the rug, okay? And- and if you have someone in your family that has a mental health issue, you'd rather say that person had cancer than a mental health issue, because it's- it's- it's a mental health issue, you don't talk about it. And it- and they're simple issues, and, I mean, they do a lot with drugs, I don't know what they do, but there's therapies involved, you can help people manage it and control it, and we don't even try anymore. It's just, it's- we do need to get that discussion going, and that's, I believe, the key to a lot of this. A lot of the murders, a lot of suicides, it's mental health issues, it's- 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 there's a lot to it. And so, if people are willing to start talking about it and get it out there, I think you'll have a more profound conversation.
I'll talk about it. The police have been to my house in December and January, because my nine-year-old is talking about killing himself, and what it's like to drink bleach, and what it's like to possibly put a rope around his neck and end it. I am living this stuff and doing it. So to your point, I am not afraid to talk about it, because it is my life, and I do want the solutions. I am as personally invested as I know other people on this council who have been through the same situations.
And I'll second that. I grew up with a sister bipolar schizophrenic in our house, tried to hang herself, been there, seen it, it's ugly. It's out there. But we do have to talk about it, and it's- I want to again repeat that this is bigger than a Second Amendment issue, this is bigger than a mental health issue, this is getting at the core of how we raise our children, how we treat each other in a community, how we talk to each other with respect and listen. This is bigger than that.
Well, as long as we're talking about mental health issues, I just want to throw in also, I was gonna do this under the mayor's report, but I'll just go ahead and do it right now. I'm told that on social media at the moment, there are some folks that are making comments about homeless people in the city of Batavia, and that we have them wandering around here, and nothing seems to be done with these people. And I just want to go on public record as, number one, highly commending the administration of the Batavia Police Department, because I can tell you, for about the last three weeks, the chief and I, or myself and the deputy chiefs, have had almost a daily conversation about, and Laura's been included in this, some of these folks that we have wandering around Batavia. And I'm not gonna get into specific individuals, but I can tell you that through the good auspices of the Batavia Police Department, and I, you know, I suppose somebody could make the argument, "Well, it's not their business, and they shouldn't be doing this." They have reached out to every one of these people who have been identified as having some type of a mental health issue and are wandering around Batavia, because when you're homeless in Batavia, you really do stick out. I mean, there is no doubt about it. And we've got a couple that are extremely high-profile at the moment, and, you know, I am aware that the chief of police of this town gets up at four o'clock in the morning and goes out and rides around and tries to find where these people are, if they're sleeping in the bus shelter up at Batavia Avenue and Wilson, or they're sleeping down in a back alley behind some business on South Batavia Avenue or whatever, and he goes and tries to counsel with them, and tries to help them, and so do the deputy chiefs. And in every one of these instances that we've had recently, and there's two high-profile ones at the moment, that we just cannot get them to respond to us. We've offered help, we've brought in Lazarus and Hesett House to talk to them, ask them if they would come down to their locations, or come up to their locations, we can't get any cooperation. We've had these people do, and I'm not gonna say what they did, but in the last several weeks, the Batavia Police Department has had to deal with some very, very, very problematic actions by some of these people on some of the things, not necessarily criminal, but just, I would describe it as embarrassing for the whole town if it got out what some of this was going on. So this has just been a really bad scene here, and, you know, the police continue to work on it on a day-to-day basis. So anybody that goes on social media and says, "The city of Batavia is not doing anything to help these people," I beg to differ, because I can tell you, on a daily basis, seven days a week, we are there trying to help these people, trying the best we can to get them out of the cold, or whatever. And it's unbelievable, the annex that we put up with, and it's- I'm convinced from what I've seen and heard of it, a lot of it is a mental health issue, and that's clearly what it is, and there's nothing that, within reason, that these people want to agree to. So I just want everybody in this town to know that we are doing monumental tasks and trying to deal with these poor people, and I won't describe them as poor people from their problems with their mental attitudes, but that we are not ignoring these people at all, and I'm insulted and angered when I hear that people are on social media accusing the city of Batavia and its police department of being heartless and not doing anything for helping these homeless people, because that is farthest from the truth. And I just want to sit, put the record straight on that, that we are not at all trying to ignore these people, but it's like talking to a stone wall in many instances, as far as trying to get them to do something, or conform to what you'd like to have them do, or realize what benefits that can be brought to them if they just let us help them, but some of them are just, I don't know, it's a mental thing, and, you know, the mental issue is- is the mental issue, and there's- sometimes there's not a really easy answer to it, and we're dealing with that right now, on a kind of a different grade than some of this other terrible stuff that we've talked about tonight. But I feel, from the community's perspective, this is good that we had this conversation, and, you know, I- I thank Chris out in the audience for helping bring it along in the school board, and you missed most of the conversation we've had here tonight, but we've had quite a, you know, coming-to-ourselves conversation here about, you know, what's going on, and what we can do as a community, and, you know, what legal constraints we are under in some instances because of state and federal laws and actions. You know, if I have one other thing I would suggest, is that this is an election season, there's a lot of people running around, running for office, and if people really feel very strongly about this, I would suggest you get in the face of some of these people who are running to be elected representatives at the state and federal level, because those are the people- are the people that really need to hear this, and those are the positions that can, if they, if they want to, can make a difference. But if they don't hear it, and I would suggest that probably a lot of them that are surrounding us right now need to hear what everybody's got to say. So I'll get off my high horse. Any other business?
I was just going to comment that, like Elliot and Marty said, I too have been through this many times, too many times. I lost a niece to suicide, kind of blindsided by that, never knew it was coming, never had an idea that that was going to happen. I think Elliot is right that we're done with the majority of everything we've talked about and everything that's happened in the past. I think at this point, it has to move beyond just the simple conversations, reacting every time something happens, to us figuring out what we can do at our level, because we can't wait, we can't expect politicians or police or teachers or anybody else in the government or in the world outside ours to take care of this problem. Because in my mind, and I've joked about this for years, that there's two things wrong with our country, and I'm sorry, Roman, but it's lawyers and the lack of parents' involvement in their kids' lives. Take anything you want, and I can take it back to those two things being wrong with this country. And the parent side of it, I think, is the biggest thing. And I'm still in shock that, you know, we had a nineteen-year-old kid that took a gun and then went and shot how many hundred rounds or whatever he shot off while he was there, and no parent in that house or no other person in that house had any clue, or at least we don't know at this point, that had any clue that he was going to do that. Well, I can tell you from my life as a kid in this town and everybody that I grew up with that had guns constantly in their house or available to anybody. I mean, in somebody's pickup truck window when we were in high school, I remember somebody getting yelled at because they had the guns still in plain sight in the back window, because we were leaving to go hunting after school. It was just amazing to me that nobody ever thought about that would be the right thing to do. You know, that that would be the way to get back at somebody or to, you know, take out your frustration or your problem on somebody else, was to take a gun and then go shoot people. I think, to me, that is one of the root causes of why all this happens, is because nobody respects anybody anymore. Nobody has any respect for anything that belongs to anybody else, or if you don't like what somebody has, either take it, break it, destroy it, whatever, that's what our society has devolved to at this point. And I think that's the real problem. Again, I don't know how we solve it, but I think it, as Elliot said, it has to start here. It has to start at this level, where we as parents and we as community members be part of it, from that level, from the basic beginning of it, because then they don't get to be nineteen years old and so mad at the world and so upset with whatever's going on in their life that they decide they have to go out and kill somebody else, or kill themselves. Because I still don't understand that, how, at the end of everything, you decide that the best way out, the best thing to do is to kill yourself. I just, I've never been able to fathom how you can justify that as the right action. I understand the anger. I understand the despair, the, you know, everything else that goes along with depression, and I know with my daughter that's bipolar, how there's a high and there's a low, and there's so much that goes on, especially in a kid's mind, how you get to the point where killing somebody else or killing yourself is the answer. And I think we have to figure a way, and when we go through all this and we figure out how we work with the school district and work with the community to try to make this work at our level, that we address those basic problems and those basic questions, because if we don't, nothing we talk about's going to matter.
One last thing from me, and I think, you know, it's, one of the quotes that I really like to live by is that Edmund Burke, and maybe you've heard it before, but I'm going to say it again, is "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." And that can't be us. This has to start in our backyard. This isn't all hands on deck. It's not just the city, it's not just the school district, it's not just our police. It is our places of worship, it is our neighborhoods. We're a community based, built of neighbors. And, you know, I think maybe we've gotten away from that a little bit. But we can't let this lie. Marty, I'm behind you a hundred percent. Chris, I'm all in. And we need to be as a community. Whether, you know, what we can do legally, leave that to the lawyers. We'll figure that out, you know? But this is, this is a conversation that needs to be had. Everyone's, everyone's involved. Everyone needs to know. The surest way for people not to do anything is for darkness to remain. Light is how you get rid of darkness, and that's with discussion. That is opening up the table to things you might not hear. You know, mental illness, Alan? You know, we struggle with understanding how people may not rationally, you know, come to a conclusion, that's where mental health, that's the, that's part of the issue. I don't understand it. But it's a conversation we as a community, all hands, have to have.
I agree, mental health is a big problem in this country. We have made a lot of advancements in understanding the human brain. I lost a brother when I was eighteen to suicide, and I've learned a ton since then. I've become aware. You're absolutely right, Mike, in that stigma that's with it. I need, I have to caution us that, let us not forget what the real issue here is. It is guns. Guns are the problem. Other countries have mental health, but they don't have gun problems like we have a gun problem. One thing that everyone can do when they vote, know what the voting record is of the person you're voting for. You should know that our congressman, Congressman Holkren, has a ninety-three percent NRA voting record. He votes with them ninety-three percent of the time. He was a champion just this fall of legislation that undermined the state law here and concealed carry, the reciprocity issue. They can, so they don't have to follow, someone with a concealed carry permit in another state where they may not have had training, they can carry here without having training. That undermines us. He voted for that. He's the, he's part of the problem. So if you, if you want to do something, do not vote for people that support doing nothing about guns and letting the gun manufacturers rule, because that's what's happened in the NRA. They claim they have rank and file numbers. They collect peanuts from, from their members. It's gun manufacturers. This is about sales of guns. And if you want to do something about it, vote. And vote these people out that are offering up our children, that are failing, that are making America a failed state, because the purpose of the social contract is to protect each other, protect us from each other. And our leaders are failing us. They are not protecting us from each other. And mental health has to be addressed, but let us not lose sight of what this issue is. This issue is guns, and our streets are flooded with guns. Assault rifles are, assault rifles are meant to kill people. And that's what I have to say about that.
Here, here.
Anybody else? Well, I think this was a good conversation for the council to have. Obviously, there was a lot of pent-up demand, and we're still kind of searching our way through this, and, you know, having been here a long time, I'm, as I explained to you earlier, after my experience back in 2002 with the state legislature, you know, the state and federal government hold a lot of the cards here at the table as far as what you can and can't do with the weapons. And so that's where the issue's got to rest in Washington and Springfield, as far as us go, as far as what we can do. But I certainly think that you guys are a great representation of the sentiment that's now pretty widespread throughout the community, as far as I'm reading it, that people are feeling very strongly about this, so it's good to have the conversation. Chris, you got any idea when you want to have your community meeting in?
I think the sooner we do it, the better. I think that public attention tends to wait quickly, and I would prefer to do it preferably before the March twenty.
Before the March twentieth vote, you mean?
There's supposed to be a march in Washington on March twentieth.
Well, March twentieth is the date of the, of the primary election in Illinois, so.
Well, I, so I would like to do it before. That's just, I think people will lose their interest after that, unfortunately.
I think you better come up with a fairly big spot. I'm not sure how, this could generate a big crowd, I would think.
Well, I would like to go around and find out what community leaders would like to be part of this, and from there, we will find a venue, find out how many people are going to come. We have lots of large venues in Batavia, whether it be the middle school or the high school, the library here. We just have to figure out how many people have interest.
I would suggest you probably need one of the high school facilities. Yeah, there's pretty widespread support here for this, so.
I'm really glad to see that.
I just, you know, bringing, trying to bring him, I've had the gun debate in here once or twice before over the years, and you fill the room on both sides, and this room isn't really big enough to have, you know, everybody comfortably sitting, sitting down, as we found out some more, some of our other recent experiences here in town. So if you're going to do this, I'd suggest you get to a bigger venue than, than the library or the city council chambers. All right, anybody have any other business? If not, I've already given you the mayor's report. So we need a motion to then go into executive session for the discussion of sale of electricity.
So move. Second?
Motion and second. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.